All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order, a special meeting. Thank you all for coming for the presentation of the budget. Lisa, do you want to call the attendance?
Yes.
Okay. Anthony Amato, absent. Ellen Brown, absent. John?
Here.
Greg Cava. Michelle?
Here.
James?
Here.
Stephanie?
I'm here.
Michael?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Jen? And Peter? Okay, thank you. All right. Role's been called, so I'm going to turn it over to Megan Bennett, our superintendent, for her budget proposal.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate the time of our Board of Education members, town selectmen, administrators, and community members who have put time into creating and helping us with our budget presentation this evening. My name is Megan Bennett, and I am proud to stand here before you today, along with our Director of Finance, Nicole Grant, to share the Superintendent's 2019-2020 budget. Spoiler alert: this is the worst kept secret. We are going to be looking for an increase this year. We recognize that with agri-science and some of the new programs and initiatives we need to do, that we will be seeking an increase, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about how we came to that number. This presentation does provide us with the ability to showcase and communicate to our community our needs and how we're going to utilize those dollars. Our administrators took the time and efforts to consider the needs of their programs, buildings, services, staff, and most importantly, their students. We also explored the wants that we have, those things that will push us to the next level of learning opportunities. These wants were evaluated against the cost point of view and the benefits they will provide. It is my hope that the budget presented tonight is done in a fashion that helps keep your eye on the bottom line while still explaining the details within each request and line item. I am hoping that this presentation allows you to see the merit and reasoning behind the dollars being sought for our upcoming school year. This is our year of the ask. I will put the statement up front that we are asking for a budget support to support the staff and our agri-science program. The communities have voted for the agri-science program, and this year we need to invest in order to get the returns on the agri-science tuition and education. We have taken efforts not to sacrifice one program for another as we welcome new initiatives. Our goal is to present a fair and balanced request to the towns and the students that we serve. Our vision and our mission have not changed. Our vision remains to educate and challenge our students. Our goals break down to three simple ideas: we support, we connect, and we empower our students. We need to prepare them for the world that awaits beyond our graduation stage. Our mission statements have also remained constant. However, I'm highlighting the words "optimize student achievement." We recognize that our students are not achieving to the levels we would like on our standardized testing measures. We are analyzing for the causes for our decline in standardized test scores. Through the analysis, we are targeting the necessary action to improve test scores while maintaining our innovative approach to teaching concepts and enlightening our thinkers. I'm not going to create a budget to raise test scores. That's easy. I just increased the worksheet budget, and we drill and kill. We are not reducing our educational standards to that. As we shared in our SAT presentation, we are looking to teach to the conceptual understanding and provide embedded skills throughout the K-12 curriculum to prepare our students and address the deficits that we are seeing through the testing measures. I'm not looking to put undue pressure on our students. We recognize the need to prepare our students to take these high-stake tests as they will need to meet these challenges when they take the SATs, the ACTs, the MCATs, the ALSTATs, the GREs. Quite frankly, the acronyms change, but the skills our students need when they think about their readiness to handle and prepare for the tests that they will encounter as they build their careers are important. Some of the actions that will be taken to improve our students' test readiness, as well as their next-level learning, will be accounted for in personnel shifts, dollars requested, and resources sought. Our mission is clear: we need to provide our students with tools to be successful in any endeavor that they choose. So let's start by answering, who are we? We are three small towns who seek to provide our students all of the opportunities they would find in larger school districts, while still providing that small setting with access to teachers and support staff. The personal connections our students have in Region 12 is what makes small towns amazing. Our students are not numbers. When we explore achievements, we talk about our children as human beings, not students. Region 12 educates 364 students from Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. And we invite students from other districts to partake in our education because of the experiences we offer to our Tuition-In program. And our tuition-in numbers are a testament to the work being done in Region 12. We currently serve 52 students from beyond our borders as students. And we leverage our personal connections. We provide 21st century learning opportunities and a focus on the whole student as the backbone of our educational system. Our students have access to teachers and certified staff, interventions for additional skill support, technology in one-to-one devices. However, the one-to-one device practice is no longer considered cutting-edge. Access to devices is now the expectation in most educational systems and allows our students the tools necessary and things that they will engage throughout their lives. But we also need to provide our students with the advanced technological equipment when they seek more sophisticated learning experiences through our programming and graphics classes. Our television studio is a testament to leading technology and editing equipment our students have access to on a regular basis. The enrichment programs we offer to our students and allowing them to challenge themselves and each other with complex learning opportunities should not be sacrificed. In addition to the classroom experiences, we boast 12 middle-school teams, 25 high-school sport teams, and all of these teams are supported by our communities rather than a pay-to-play model. Our students' worlds are more beautiful because of the arts programs that we offer, including our award-winning art club, our drama program, and our film productions. People value Region 12 methods of developing the whole child. By providing students access to arts, athletic opportunities, and academic challenges -- you have already heard our presentations in the past about grit and social-emotional curriculum. We want our students to be kind, and we invest time, energy, and money into producing students with great character. We appreciate our community's support for these efforts as we recognize the whole child throughout the system. These you see before you are our core values. These are the elements of our school that make us amazing and should not be for sale. These are the things that must be preserved. So I'd like to look in the rearview mirror before we go forward. So what have we done this year? This list came from the Superintendent's budget last year. And although we had a transition between Superintendents -- that was the first thing on the list -- there was nothing that was lost in the transition between Dr. Cosentino and myself. We were able to take the efforts and momentum and push us forward. All of these efforts into the changes that were made and the accomplishments were from our efforts of our Board, our staff, and our towns. Two of these tasks stand before you today. Choose another task. We did not lose momentum, and we want to make certain we continue to keep that momentum. The elementary configuration is continuing as we make meaningful changes for future school years. Please note that the one check that is not checked off is our strategic plan. Last year, we focused on creating the new agri-science program and the transition. The request for the strategic planning will carry into this new school year. But we didn't stop there. There were many efforts actualized last year, such as the groundbreaking and agri-science building. This event that occurred on November 9th occurred because of the long-range planning from past and present administrators and staff. The years of effort by Region 12 team, staff, and communities who fought for this program were actualized on that day. The community voted for the 20th Agri-science Center right here in Connecticut and our towns. This is something in which people have believed in us, and we believed in ourselves. So I'm proud to stand here before you today and because of all of these collective efforts that March 11, 2019, our build and program development are on time and on budget. Our Science Department has shifted their instructional methods towards the next-generation science standards recommendation, the shifts that required changes in our science programs, including textbooks and sequential placement of some of our courses. Gone are the days in which we are pushing science facts into our students' heads without meaning. Now we want our students to explore, draw conclusions, make hypotheses, determine phenomenon, and make certain they are seeing it all through experimentation. This shift in our science expectations has led to the decision to put physics first. The introduction to physics, but to our ninth graders, has introduced our students to more complex understandings earlier on. Additionally, our new state-of-the-art science labs will be completed December 2019. We are investing in the sciences because we know the demands of the future. Additionally, we looked towards creating some alignments, and as you see, Power School, professional development, and grading were all taken a look to make certain that we were analyzing for opportunities to make certain that we all coexist. They all spoke to one another. It all made sense within our system. It is important that students do not feel like they got a grade, but rather they earned it throughout our system. Academic integrity and achievements are the hallmarks of a strong education system, and we recognize that we've been operating in silos at times. And we want to make certain there is continuity and collaboration in all aspects of our educational system. We want partnerships and informed consumers of education. We are proud that we offer 11 advanced placement offerings at Chapag School in addition to the virtual high-school offerings. And we are not stopping there. Our students continue to have the advantage of a large high school within our small school setting. We also recognize that we educate all students, and we are proud of the opening of the Chapag Valley Partnership Program. Ally O'Hara and her team provided our students in the 18-21 Transitional Program job experiences in community while building positive relationships and work habits. So really, what's next? Next year, we welcome 30 new freshmen to Chapag from six sending towns, in addition to our own students seeking to be part of the agri-science experience. Our tuition-in opportunity remains an option to our surrounding towns if there is space within those classrooms. Currently, 7.5% of our students educated here in Region 12 are tuitioned in. These are students who want to be here in our schools because of the programs that we offer and support that is provided. All of our students benefit from the additional peer interactions and classroom discussions. We have a commitment to share our resources but not create new needs for resources through this tuition-in program, and we continue to monitor and watch our enrollments. Sometimes innovation is easy; it's the sustainability that is the challenge. And we have to focus on sustaining and moving through cycles of continual improvement. One area for our cycle and review of improvement is our curriculum development cycle. We will be putting all of our curriculum documents into rotation in order to review and to make certain we are current in content practices and assessing methods. It is important that we remain proactive versus reactive to the stage's changes. And I want to make certain we are looking at our emphasis on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We shifted calling agri-science program AgSTEM because STEM is occurring throughout Chapag. However, the STEM skills and focus have been incorporated throughout the entire development of our agri-science curriculum and program. STEM at all levels of our schooling is not supplementing but complementing and improving instruction. We provide meaningful changes to allow our students to engineer solutions. Right up here is the image that is typically shown at Apple. This is one Steve Jobs usually opened his presentations with because we do stand at the corner of technology and liberal arts. And whereas we know what the future is, we cannot lose fact that there is the humanity that is involved. Our children need to be able to know how to communicate appropriately, interact, and understand one another. So what do we need to push us to our next step? And this is a slide you are all waiting for. When presenting this budget, it was important that we are not hiding our costs, numbers, or investments. I wanted to provide a through-line so that we can evaluate the cost of our agri-science program to the region and actualize the revenue in ways that allow our taxpayers to be informed consumers of their educational system. When our towns voted for this program, we knew there would be an upfront cost, an investment for the future. The agri-science investments account for $995,000 of this number that we are looking for the request. I am asking next year for $22,953,377 to educate our students at the current level and launch our agri-science program. The 2019-2020 budget represents an increase of $1,141,000 from our current operating Our percent increase would be 5.24%. So, the major factors that are currently driving that cost. I want to share with you how we arrived at 5.24%. And this slide illustrates all the major factors that were necessary when calculating our budget. The agri-science needed to stand alone for its cost. And here, there are some things that are missing, so I'm going to have Nicole talk to that at later slides. However, the $533,000 cost is the factor of two agri-science teachers, additional cost of utilities, textbooks, and equipment for our agri-science program. We also factored in Governor Lamont's proposal for the local responsibility for the teacher-retirement board contribution. So that way, we would not have any impact on our programming and opportunity for students if and when the localized responsibility is sought. We want to prepare our budget for the impacts the state may cause. It's also important that we share our non-negotiables. These numbers come while we look at our contractual increases to account for all of the dollars that are currently needed. And that brings us to something that is necessary. As a community, we need to care for our aging buildings. The upkeep of the buildings need to be done with regularity and prioritization. We'll get there. Okay. Tripped over that word, too. Therefore, this request is actually double what is typically sought year after year. For us, we felt it is necessary that we look at our buildings and we make certain that they are cared for, that they are preserved. If you notice, the necessary changes that are up there brought us to a total increase of $1.5 million. However, we are coming to you with a request of $1.1 million. This request comes from some of the reductions in efficiencies that we actualized in our current operating budget practices. We were able to make some reductions and adjustments to create and recognize the budget the region has come to expect year after year when we are looking at comparable programs In reviewing past budget presentations that were done by my predecessor, the budget categories were typically drawn out. We have provided the details from each one of the categories in our supporting budget document. Our full budget document will be made available at the conclusion of this presentation. Do not bombard Debbie all at once. But we will also make certain that this document will be provided and posted along with this presentation online after tonight. We reflected on our requests to make certain that we were looking at the needs within each one of the line items and truing up all of our costs. Some of the increased lines do not necessarily improve our programs but sustain our current functions. The overall impact of contractual increases were negated by some hiring savings and some personnel reductions and relocations, as well as some reallocations. Benefits were one of the driving factors last year. We had a much better forecast this year than last. Last year, the district had an 18% increase in this line item. This line item is directly impacted by employee medical claims, and this can make it a very volatile line item, and we actually were able to have a lesser increase than what was seen in the past. Our technology increase is attributed to the cost of improving our infrastructures, as well as price increases of our current softwares. We've received some cost reduction on our special education costs, which can be found in our other purchased services. Additionally, and as you noted in the previous slide, we did put additional dollars into maintaining our schools and our property and program changes line item. It is important that we are working to maintain our facilities that allow us to address priorities and plan for the necessary upkeep. This line item also carries some of the agri-science costs, which is why the increased change is not comparable to the 2018-19 budget. And therefore, calculating the change was not relevant and left open. So I do want to highlight some of the changes and some noted targeted improvements. We did not shoot for the moon with our enhancements, knowing that we have a brand-new program coming in, as well as preparing for changes that will be coming in the future years. We need to be reminded, and I probably more than anybody, sometimes you need to go slow to go fast. As mentioned in the items that were not accomplished this year, we need to have some money set aside for some strategic planning work. It will be important for the Board, educators, and communities to see how our planning will telegraph both our changes and requests for the future years. The strategic plan will incorporate the voices of school and community to craft and chart this school system's course. The safety enhancement request speaks to me both as a parent and as an educator, and if you notice, I put a parent first in that role. We have been working with our staff regarding safety measures that we are going to take in our buildings. We have discussed enforcing safety practices, but part of safety practice is monitoring who is coming in and out of our buildings. Building safety and security is not an 8 to 3 o'clock endeavor. We need to make certain that we are securing our buildings at all times, and our staff needs to have easy access when entering into our buildings, as well as allowing us the opportunity to monitor. We need to improve our infrastructure, and that you'll see when we have our technology and library electronic upgrade. Currently, our server is housed at Chapag School. If the power goes out at Chapag, all of our devices lose the ability and functionality. Essentially, we have expensive paperweights. We need to make certain that we have access to our devices at all time, and therefore, I am recommending a purchase of an additional server that would be housed at Booth Free School. It allows for a little bit more of a safety cushion when it comes to power structures and how we may be impacted by weather patterns and power in general. Additionally, our library power will need to be upgraded due to the reconfiguration of the library after construction, and we want to make certain that this library remains the heart of learning here at Chapag. Some of our more advanced technology and graphic classes do require Adobe, and unfortunately, our Chromebooks are not compatible with the Adobe platform. So therefore, we are requesting desktops to provide the opportunity for our students to experience these learning opportunities within their classes. And we continue to push our students with enriching learning. Our Project Lead the Way class continues to look to expand and evolve. They are currently looking to have a MakerBot that would allow our students to use the CAD design programming as part of their learning opportunities. And as we continue to push our learning, we are looking to add three college-level classes at Chapag School. This will actually increase ours, too. I know that we said we had 11 in the past. We will be removing one. This will bring us up to 13. And we are proud of these college offerings at our small high school. We make certain our students have all of the opportunities that their peers in other districts have. Our size does not define us. We want to make certain that we continue to share and enrich the opportunities for our students. This year, our grades 3 through 5 teachers have piloted the Engage New York program. This program is being measured against achievements, teacher feedback, and analysis standards. Engage New York is currently what our middle-school students are utilizing. Teresa DeBrito has been working with our staff to make the decision for our switch, but really what we're looking for is to make certain there is a seamless transition for our students between elementary and their middle-school experience. So, all of that was the power of "and." Now I have to talk about the tyranny of "or," things that we've had to change, things that we'll have to remove in order to see efficiencies within our ask. Some program adjustments we are seeking. We are looking to shift two tutors from our elementary level to the middle-high school level to support some of the skills that we are seeing need support through our standardized testing measures. We discussed the need for literacy support for our SATs and the need to transition our students from middle school with math supports when they arrive at Chapag. We did remove the Z-Space option for next year. This pilot had a very nice wow effect. However, the teaching tool was not as effective nor was it utilized enough for us to justify the cost for years moving forward. We are no longer offering the Advanced Placement Psychology course. We will continue to offer psychology at the high school with an honors-level challenge, but we are not going to continue to run it at the AP level. Additionally, we are looking to embrace that Google platform. Schoology has been a cost to the district, and we have not utilized the program at all levels. By shifting to the Google Classroom, we will be able to provide assignments, syllabus information, and communication opportunities between students and their teachers. The added benefit of the Google Classroom is that we can monitor who is actually accessing our work assignments. And I have to start this slide by saying that we recognize we have some very talented people on our staff. One shift that we are able to make is that we are able to reassign a staff to support the agri-science launch. We have identified a personnel who is able to move from their current job responsibilities to support our agri-science system. The agri-science clerical support is a requirement of the agri-science program per the state of Connecticut. And our staff is part of our family, and therefore, decisions that we make on budget and that impact the lives of the people we care about is a difficult decision. But we need to make certain that we are looking for how we can make a difference, how we can push some of those efforts, and how we can build capacities internally. We are pushing our students to become more independent and less reliant on our paraeducators. This building of independence will help our students move through the different stages of life. At this time, I am recommending the reduction of two paraeducator positions in this budget. Additionally, our cafeteria staff, who have cared and supported our students, currently serve approximately 150 lunches per day. We do not have the volume demand to continue to have our cafeteria staffed at the levels we have in the past. I am recommending the reduction of one cafeteria position. We also see the need to shift some of our staffs to allow support staff to be flexible in their locations. The need will determine the allotment of hours within the building. This centralization will also help us provide some common opportunities across our schools. So all of this leads us to our biggest change agent for next year. When agri-science is fully staffed, there will be four agri-science teachers. We recognize that next year, we are adding grades 9 and 10, and therefore, we are seeking to hire two additional agri-science seeking to hire two additional agri-science teachers next year, which will bring us to three agri-science teachers for the 2019-2020 school year. So, we've talked about the most significant change for next year is our inaugural year of agri-science. I would like to introduce Nicole Grant to share the breakdown of the agri-science facts and figures and provide more understanding behind the numbers and costs of the program as well as revenues and projections for the next few years.
Thank you, Megan. And thank you for all of the board members present here tonight as well as our guests. The first expense that I'd like to talk about as it relates to the agri-science program is the district's debt service. I do want to point out that not all debt service is related to the agri-science program. Some of the debt service costs are related to the science lab renovations. The timing of these projects works out nicely for us as a district in that the current debt service related to past projects is being retired this fiscal year. In the very near future, at the end of this week, in fact, the district is going to market with its public offering statement to issue a bond in the amount of $8.25 million, as well as a bond anticipation note in the amount of $4 million. The purpose of these financings is twofold. The bond is permanent financing of the district's share of the agri-science and science lab project costs, meaning the percentage of the project cost that is not funded by the state grants. The bond anticipation note is to fund the state holdback of the project grants in order that we may fund completed construction in December of this year while we await reimbursement of the holdback amounts from the state grants. The release of the holdback is a process that may take more than two years as the state conducts its audit of the completed project. Once the state releases the holdback, it will be used to repay the bond anticipation note, and that liability will be removed from our balance sheet. These new debt instruments will create debt service to the district for next fiscal year in a combined estimated amount just over $673,000. The final interest rate will be determined when we go to market later this week. We have projected conservatively and hope to see an even lower number for debt service after the closing of the bond issuance. However, as projected here, the result is an increase of $63,000 in debt service for next year over the district's current debt service. However, the increase in debt service will be funded by the bond premium that the district will receive at issuance, as well as the current balance in our debt service reserve fund. Therefore, we have level-funded the debt service in the superintendent's budget request. Moving on, you'll see in this table why the debt service information is relevant at this point in our presentation. Earlier, Superintendent Bennett showed expenditures related to the agri-science project of $533,000. These expenditures are for staff, supplies, and operational expenses. They're reflected here in Columns 1 and 2. The amount in Column 3, $461,800, is the portion of the new debt service that is related to the agri-science project. The balance of the debt service is related to the cost of the science lab renovations. The science lab renovations is a project that benefits all Chapag Valley students, and therefore, the portion of the debt service related to the science lab is not reflected here as a cost specific to the agri-science program. When the agri-science debt service cost is added, as shown in Column 3, the total agri-science program costs for next year are $994,000. These costs represent 4.33% of the overall proposed budget. You will note on this slide that I have added some emphasis to Year 4 of the program. Keep this in mind as we move to the next slide. So I want to turn our attention to our agri-science business model. We have discussed the program costs. Now let's discuss the program revenue. We now know our enrollment numbers for Year 1. We've accepted 31 students from six sending towns as well as 21 students from Region 12. Working with this number, we have projected enrollment for the first five years of the program, reaching a projected capacity of 149 students in Year 4. We will receive state revenue for each of the 52 students in the amount of $4,200. In addition, we will receive tuition from the sending towns for our non-resident students of $6,832 each. We believe these numbers to be conservative based on the number of applications received this year, which exceeded expectations. You can see that revenue steadily grows as the program reaches full capacity in Years 4 and 5. In this analysis, the program becomes self-sufficient or break-even in Year 4. This is the year that was emphasized in the prior slide and is also highlighted here. Once we reach Year 4, the program is not only break-even but producing $200,000 in revenue. In fact, the program is nearly break-even in Year 3 before it reaches full enrollment. I also want to mention, because I feel it's noteworthy at this point of discussion, as we look forward to the future of the program, that in Year 6, our debt service costs will begin to slide backward annually. In addition, we will no longer be paying tuition to non-aog for our own students to attend their agri-science program, but rather keeping them in the district that they call home. With both of those variables trending favorably, we should see an even stronger return on our investment in future years despite program cost increases for staffing and operations. It's our hope that state and town tuition will also increase, but that does remain to be seen. What all of these numbers mean and why they're important to this discussion is that agri-science revenue in Year 1 of the program will offset the expenses requested in the superintendent's budget request for next year. When the agri-science revenue is received and returned to the towns, the budgetary increase requested by the superintendent is reduced to 3.26% over last year's budget. The cost of the towns will further decrease when you consider the revenue from district tuition and students, and we'll talk about those next. For fiscal year 1819, the towns funded the approved budget net of $340,000, representing projected revenue from the tuition-in program. Additionally, after audit, we were pleased to return additional tuition as well as surplus to the towns. In an effort to maintain the conservative approach we have taken throughout this agri-science discussion, we have projected our tuition and students here as a constant. As demonstrated here, the addition of the agri-science program to the district's offerings will generate significantly larger returns to the towns in an amount more than double the level of past-year returns. If we combine our revenue numbers and we factor the returns for both agri-science and tuition-in, holding the tuition as a constant, the projected revenue is $770,000 next year. After factoring this revenue, the superintendent's budget request is an increase of 1.7% over the 1819 budget. I do want to draw to your attention that the state's portion of the agri-science tuition in payment is paid retroactively. This means the town should anticipate a return of the state agri-science tuition in the fall of 2020 during the 2021 fiscal year. At this time, as long as there's no questions, I'm going to turn this back over to Megan for your conclusion.
Coming. Lot of slides. Okay. The chart you see before you is what we have shown as our towns and their given percentage based on October 1 enrollments. These are the numbers we submit to the state. On October 1, we had 600 students from Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. From the 600 number, we recognize the percentage of students that are allotted to each one of the towns, and this is where we get our percentage of membership. I would like to remind anyone who would like to see this information in more detail that we will have this budget provided after our presentation as well as online. We want to make certain that people are able to see our numbers, where information has come from. We want to make certain that we are as transparent as possible. This is about making decisions moving forward. We need to evaluate our investments as they are. So, we recognize that our budget request is atypical for what our towns have come to expect over the past few years. The increased request for dollars can be attributed to program supports and actions needed within the district. Our students deserve the opportunities and experiences that will prepare them for the life beyond the Chapag High School graduation. The agri-science program was a smart investment and is already showing signs of exceeding our expectations. With the interest level of our aspiring agri-science students, the agri-science program that was voted on by our communities, this vote has started the journey of a thousand tales. We are now crafting that story together. People have argued for and against this program, and we are no longer talking about what-ifs. We are talking about what-is. The build, the program, and the applications are in place. The success of the agri-science program in our district is now dependent on support. The opinions about the state of Connecticut are not opinions about Region 12. The merit of our request needs to be evaluated against the best chances for success of our programs at all levels and in all areas. So I thank you. Our staff thanks you. But more importantly, our children thank you.
Did we want to open up for questions, or do we want to adjourn? All right.
Adjourn, I was going to say.
I think we have it later on the agenda. So we'll adjourn the presentation now, and we'll take a two-minute break because they want to switch the DVD, and we'll start our board meeting in just a couple minutes. Thank you.